Jim Benage.
Here.
Jeff Elshoff.
Here.
Jeff Hawes.
Betty Martin.
Here.
Justin Smith.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you. I want to welcome everybody to our regularly scheduled meeting of your Bel Air City Council. And what we do at every meeting is we begin with a moment of silent prayer. Ask that you would join me in a quiet, silent prayer. Amen. Now please rise and join us in the saying of the Fledge of Allegiance, the American Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing to come before the governing body this evening is the consent agenda, which has three items in it. Item A is minutes of the May 15, 2018 city council meeting. Then we have our minutes from our special city council meeting, which took place on May 29. Then we have a sales permit for Far Hall Fireworks LLC. They'll be located at 4552 North Woodland.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I think, do we need to get a couple more chairs? We just want to make sure to do that if we have.
There's a few seats over here. There's a few seats over here.
In the front there.
Yeah.
You sure? Okay, let us know, we'll be happy to take care of you for that. All right, then we're going to move forward with the discussion and approval of appropriations ordinance 2018-11, the amount of $402,988.80.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve appropriations ordinance 18-11.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. City requested appearances, I have a number, large stack up here, that we will haul those for citizens' concerns here in just a minute. I don't think we're doing that, but we have no formal requested appearances. Right now, we do have a proclamation on our agenda this evening for Flag Day. I will go ahead and read that proclamation from the bench. "To the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas, greetings. Whereas the Second Continental Congress adopted the American Flag on June 14, 1777, and whereas June 14, 2018 marks over 237 years of displaying our American Flag, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize Old Glory as a symbol of hope, inspiration, and pride for the people of the United States and around the world. Whereas, in order to commemorate the adoption of our flag on August 3, 1949, the Congress, by joint resolution, designated June 14 of each year as Flag Day, and requested that the President issue an annual proclamation designating the week in which June 14 occurs as National Flag Week, and call upon all citizens of the United States to display the flag during that week. And now therefore, I David Austin, by the power vested in me as Mayor of the City of Bel Air, and on behalf of the City Council and citizens of Bel Air, do hereby proclaim the week of June 10 through 16 as National Flag Week in the City of Bel Air, Kansas. And I ask all of our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of our country by displaying our American Flag at their homes and throughout the country." Sign that. Pass that down to the clerk, please. Okay, I do want to go ahead and open up citizens' concerns. And I do have a large stack up here of requested, I just want to ask, is there anybody here in the audience? And first, I want to say it's fantastic to have a full room. And again, I see some standing room only. If anybody needs a chair, please, by all means, let us know. And I'll send Trish because she's standing there. But we'll make sure we can find those for you. We'll do that. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak on an agenda item? Not, that is not Aurora Park, not 37th and Harding's, or any other topic that somebody wishes to address council about tonight? In the room? Okay, hearing none. Want to let everybody know that we've not come to the voting part on tonight's agenda. And council will have, will be able to take three different actions tonight. One, we can approve the petition and allow the townhomes to be built as presented. Two, we can deny the petition, meaning the property stays zoned for commercial use. Or three, send it back to the Planning Commission, which I have to be honest with you, I think makes the most sense. And just to let everybody kind of know watching at home and hear a little bit of the background here, this is land at 37th Street near Harding that we're talking about, three specific lots over there. This land has sat vacant for a very long time. Presently, it's zoned for commercial. We have a developer who has built in Bel Air, who bought the three lots along 37th Street, and has asked the council to grant his request of changing the zoning definition so he may build townhomes on it. And is Rick Hoffman here?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And I would like to break protocol here a little bit, and want to see, ask, are you willing to look at this again and hopefully come up with a solution that more closely worked with the character of the neighborhood? Maybe ranch-style or one-story townhomes or?
Yes, yeah, yes, I'm willing, you know, for the council, the planning committee and so forth, to put something together that would look very nice there. Landscaping, fencing, and, you know, pay drive going into the facility sure. And these will, you know, be for sale. Not necessarily rentals, they're going to be individually sold. Or they're going to go to coke and try to get the short-term, you know, year number of estate with professionals coming into town.
Well, I appreciate you answering the question. When we get to that part of the agenda, I might invite you to come up again at that time. But like I said, something, something is going to go on those lots. And something's going to go there. My recommendation, when the time comes, again, later on on the agenda, that we send it back in hopes, and we just heard from Mr. Hoffman, that, that we send it back in hopes that Mr. Hoffman and the Planning Commission can come up with something that more closely matches the character of the neighborhood. That would be my hope, and that maybe the Planning Commission and Mr. Hoffman could facilitate a conversation. Again, we don't have a full room here by accident tonight. So we definitely want to make sure we adhere to that. You know, what that is, I'm going to be honest with you, I don't exactly know what it is. Is it single-story townhomes? Is it ranch-style duplexes like I just mentioned? The Planning Commission's recommendation that's before us this evening is to deny the request by virtue of a 3-3 tie. So it isn't like we have an overwhelming recommendation either way. We certainly want to respect Mr. Hoffman and his investment and his desire to build again in Bel Air. We also want to respect the character of the neighborhood as well. So again, my recommendation to the council will be that we send it back and make sure that the concerns are addressed, especially since there was a 3-3 vote at the Planning Commission and that the petitioner has since expressed the interest we just heard in meeting with the neighbors to discuss any alternative resolutions that both make the petitioners and neighbors something that they could both live with. I know this may not be what some of you want to hear and what some of you are anxious for an answer tonight, but I want to make sure we get this right. Again, we've got vacant lots, something's going to go on, and I want to make sure that we get this right. So with that, I'm going to invite the public who wishes to make comment to come up, and I will call your name. I have a 13, actually 14, 15, excuse me, cards in front of me. And one of the cards, an individual has asked that he yield his time, beg your pardon here to, let me find that, to Bonnie Stinson. So, you know, we normally have a cap, we ask to keep the comments at three minutes, especially having so many. I'd like to, to honor that request, but we do, like I said, have one request that a person, one person yield his three minutes to Bonnie Stinson, since it's just one, we would, okay, a lot of you want to yield your time to one person, is that what I'm hearing? Okay, I.
I have one question.
Okay, let me hold tight here then, okay. If you're, if you want to speak tonight to the Aurora Park, let's have you stand up along this wall over here, not while we get a better idea. And then I want to answer questions before we get started. Let's do that. If you would, please stand up. And I'm just going to go in the order, I'll call these out, and then if there's additional individuals after that. So, did each one of you fill out one of these cards? Is anybody there that did not? Is there anybody in the audience that filled out a card that is not standing up? One, okay, two. Okay, so we have two that are not standing up that filled out cards. So the two of you are wanting to yield time to another member? Okay, and we had a question over here?
I did.
Yeah.
Since there's two items on the agenda over Aurora Park, are three minutes are limited to the vacation order and the rezoning?
That's normally how we do it. I'm thinking seriously about making an exception. Now, you have another question over there? Yeah.
I did have a question. I wanted to will my three minutes to Bonnie Stinson.
I'm not saying I'm a spokesperson, but I kind of have driven this thing, so just, I think you all know that.
Yeah, and a number of you have even, I think, exchanged a few emails with, and again, active citizenship and participations, we appreciate that. What I'm going to ask, then, is if everyone's in agreement here, move forward. But seeing all these people here, I'm thinking on the fly, excuse me, I'm looking at a city attorney to make sure I'm not breaking anything here, any rules, not breaking anything. But if we could allow Ms. Stinson maybe 10 minutes to speak, and then ask everybody else if you could keep yours to three minutes with that, or three to five?
I was going to yield my time too to Bonnie Stinson.
Okay, so if you're going to, so we'll do that. So Ms. Stinson, would you like to start us off? And I would ask that you try to keep it to maybe 10 minutes and then we'll.
That's fine. I tried to whittle it down. What I've done is I give it.
Oh, please come to the podium, I'm sorry. And this is something.
Are we starting?
Yeah, we're going to go ahead and start. This is now the citizens' concerns part.
Do you want to sit down?
Yeah, so. I guess if you're going to speak for 10 minutes, you can sit or stand, do whatever. But I will, I will begin with Bonnie, and like I said, with all the yielding, we're going to allow for 10 minutes there. Again, this is not, just so everybody knows, this is citizens' comments, so citizens' concerns, it's not a hearing where we're going to have a bunch of back and forth asking questions, which is why I wanted to answer those questions before we started at this time. But I would ask everyone who is going to speak that first you would start with giving us your name and your address and.
Okay, my name is Bonnie Stinson, and I live at 3800 North Harding. And I'm going to speak tonight based on the actions on the agenda. My first thing is I understand that the choice to change this zoning restriction is a discretionary policy choice of the governing body. But any change made is one that Aurora Park neighborhood residents will have to live with along with any significant effects of this zoning change that's decided tonight by the governing body. On the variance request, I'm going to start with that. The application itself, there is case law that supports the need to have an evidence of hardship on the owner's part. The hardship paragraph number four has been left blank on his application. That leads me to believe you're assuming there's a hardship on his part. I could not make that decision. Bel Air regulations have mandatory findings. These are not choice, they're mandatory. And it states that all five of these conditions need to be met, and I do not believe all five have been met. And these are your regulations, not mine. The Kansas statute also supports your regulations that say all five conditions must be met. This request, to me, has not demonstrated a hardship that would prevent building on this lot under the current setbacks. The application, in my opinion, should be denied. I'm going to go on to the rezoning app part of this. I'm going to do the same thing here. I'm going to go down the line on the application. What are the valid reasons for rezoning? The reason given was C1 to R5. Bel Air regulations state the application with data and information to assure that, to assure all facts have been presented for the permanent record. The required reason given is not clear to me. Is it clear to the governing body? Master growth plan has in it that it limits residential multifamily to R6 zoning districts, giving ample setback space and screen. He's not asking for an R6, he's asking for R5 for multifamily. There is also the eight golden factors. Reasonableness in reaching a decision. Number eight is conformance to the recognized comprehensive plan. Your comprehensive plan development states the future growth, amenities, quality of life, and character of the community are all tied to the land use plan. Smart growth, continue to develop the community as a city of the future with respect for the past. We represent that past. Definition of quality of life in your comprehensive plan is to retain hometown feeling that was created and the desire to continue to develop that atmosphere. These duplexes do not do that in our neighborhood. The restrictive covenants, for some reason, people don't think they exist. I'm here to tell you they are on file at the Register of Deeds and has been renewed every 10 years since 1972. Four auctions this year have included the covenant document that is on file in the Register of Deeds, and these four auctions were held in Aurora Park. I've looked at every one of them, the covenants is included. Case law supports the enforcement of the restrictive covenants. We are a single-family residence. The homes need to be 1,500 square feet, and we can own no barn animals. I do have a question that I do not expect you to answer, okay? If the rezoning issue was happening across from where each of you lived, would you think it was smart growth? And would you embrace this rezoning with your open arms? I also want to know how you can make a decision tonight based on my request for the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting, so I could see what the record said from May 10. I was informed I couldn't have that record because it hasn't been approved yet. So I'm assuming you don't have that information either. And that, to me, is not the way a record is completed. In my opinion, this land has been a mess from the beginning, and I do believe that the city plays an important role in creating that mess. It was rezoned R1, then they rezoned it to commercial neighborhood, and it sat and sat and sat because that lift station is sitting there and nobody wants to build on it. Now you've got somebody coming in saying they want to build on it, and you're jumping at the chance to do it. That's fine, jump at the chance. But make sure it fits all your regulations and case law. And I've given you out a bunch of information that I couldn't say tonight because I didn't think I'd have my more than three minutes. So I would like for you to take a look at that. Stacy has it, I don't know if she's given it to you yet. There's two documents, one for the setback and one for the rezoning. And with that said, I think I am done. And I did a good job.
Thank you.
Time out.
Next, I want to call up Daniel T. Watkins. Same thing, if you would, state your name and address.
My name is Daniel T. Watkins. I live at 4186 North Parkwood in the Aurora Park neighborhood. Mayor, council, citizens, thank you for giving me an opportunity. Given what she just said, I, I think the main thing I want to say is that I am voicing my opposition to those places being built there. I think the property's too small. I don't think we would have adequate parking for people that would be there. And it has a number of other issues that need to be addressed and looked at. Other than that, that was my primary. I've never been to one of your council meetings before, so this was my first, so thank you.
You're welcome anytime. Steve Olson?
Yes, my name is Steve Olson. I live at 4825 North Farmstead Court. That is not in Aurora Park. But I do live in an area that's governed by an HOA, and I'm concerned about that. We have covenants and bylaws which govern the area that are non-negotiable. These are rules and regulations for every resident, every developer. Every person who comes into the area, wants to live in the area, must comply with the existing covenants and bylaws. They're in place to protect the homeowner's investment and maintain property values for the homeowners. For the city to even consider rezoning a property which would violate the covenants of a development is wrong and could put the city in jeopardy, in legal jeopardy. When I brought another issue to the previous city attorney, I was told to go back and reinforce my covenants in the HOA because they would be much more enforceable and much stronger than any city zoning code or regulations. So I certainly encourage caution. I encourage the council to do the right thing and reject the rezoning proposal in item A. If you don't, you will have undermined the credibility and integrity of every HOA in Bel Air and sabotage property values throughout Bel Air, HOA or not. Please consider this, thank you.
Next, I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly, Amy Gunzelman?
I pass my time to Bonnie.
Okay, so you have no additional comments? I heard a voice somewhere there, okay.
I could come back. I got something cool I forgot to show you.
Do you have something cool? Let's bring you back up at the end, have a.
Can I come back?
Let's do that, all right. How about Carolyn Gunzelman?
I'm Carolyn Gunzelman. I live at 5029 East 39th Street North and have for about 20 years. It would be my desire for the council to vote to have this property as a single-family residence zoning. The plan that he has doesn't fit the neighborhood, and I feel like if you don't change the zoning to a single-family now, we're going to have to start the process all over again. I would like to remind you that our motto says that you have respect for the past, and as one of the oldest neighborhoods in Bel Air, we are the past. And I might want to say that we're all old, but there's, there's a lot of past here. And I, I don't think, you know, we were, when we were at the last zoning meeting, one of the zoning members spoke in regard to the potential for tax revenue on that property with the improvements that the gentleman wants to make on that property. And I would encourage you not to look at that property and the zoning issue as a source of revenue at the expense of our current, the current residents. Thank you.
Sylvia Forte?
I'm Sylvia Forte. I live at 4072 North Harding. In addition to the correspondence I sent by email, I want the council to consider this. Bel Air prides itself on quality of neighborhoods and its citizens' involvement with and participation in county government. We appreciate the citizens who give freely of their time to enhance our community and the various boards and communities. They have volunteered to work on the master plans, comprehensive plans, community development, zoning plans, and regulations, et cetera. Their purpose was to determine the best practices for enhancing the quality of our community. The actions of this council tonight or in the future will either strengthen or undermine these groups with, these groups within our community. We do not want the council to send citizens a message of disregard for their time or vision for Bel Air. There are unintended consequences of ignoring setbacks for a totally inappropriate plan for an undersized lot. To ignore the intent and nature of covenants is to say your covenants are not worth the paper upon which they are written. The sale of land in Bel Air will become more difficult. Marketers and developers of areas competing with Armgate and other neighborhoods here with, that have empty lots, will point to Aurora Park as a warning to potential buyers of what may happen in the future. This will impede future sales and new development, which is so vital for Bel Air. Thank you.
And Joseph Fort?
I was going to yield my time but.
Okay. Melanie Penner?
I was going to give my time, but I will speak.
Can you invite?
I'm Melanie Penner. We live at 4100 North Batten, and we have lived there for 27 years. And the whole time we have lived there, all of these dwellings have been single-family residences. And that's part of the reason we chose that, the larger lots, the setbacks from the streets. We like the best of two worlds, living in the city, but yet country life, and we'd like to continue with that type of lifestyle. And a question or a matter I have, we had heard that Mr. Hoffman had asked prior, maybe, to buying this property, is there any difficulty to rezoning this? And he was told that shouldn't be a problem. Now, maybe that's hearsay, what I've repeated, but if that is true, somebody shouldn't be telling someone that's interested in buying property that shouldn't be a problem to rezone. Because as you can tell, there are a lot of us that have lived there for several years, and we'd like to keep our Aurora Park in that same community as it stands today. Thank you.
I have Mark Schroder.
I'm Mark Schroder. I live at 5101 East 39th Street North. And I'm, you know, repeat what everybody else has said, but I wanted to say it myself. But I, if the council is representing us to our best interest and my interest would be, do whatever you can to make this a single-family dwelling. And I feel like if we do change zoning to allow multifamily dwellings here, then maybe not close in the future, but sometime in the future, that's going to come back, and it's going to be much easier to rezone anything with the idea that we can get more revenue. And for me, I like the single-family dwelling, and I hope we can keep it that way. Thanks.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak before we ask Bonnie to come back up and show us the cool thing? Please come forward.
I'm Lucinda Scott Pierce, and I think I've probably lived in Aurora Park longer than anybody else. My parents were one of the first people to build there, so I've been there for 63 years. I live across the street from where my parents built. I know that their dream, when they built out there, was to have a family neighborhood. Duplexes isn't what we have out there. If you drive through the neighborhood, we have lots and lots of different kinds of houses, lots of different sizes of houses, but they're all single-family home. And that's what the dream was. That's what our past is. So, I hope that you consider that as you look at Aurora Park and the history that we have had since 1952. Thank you.
Anybody else? Stinson, I would invite you. A lot of people have yielded their time, and if you said you'd forgotten to show us something, if you wanted to...
I did, because you made me stand up against the wall. I forgot to come back to my seat and get this for you. My name's Bonnie Stinson. I live at 3800 North Harding, and I'm back again. What I have here, just to show you what everybody has said, is we've been around here a long time. And something cool that you did not get a hold of me on for your book, that the history of Bel Air, I have in my hand the history of Aurora Park. And I want you to know, like I told Jackie, this used to be Osage, or maybe not, maybe I told Stacy, Osage Indian lands. We can build a casino on Central Park, guys. It goes back to 1872, August 17th, 1872. And I even have the original plaque of Aurora Park. Is that not cool? I thought it was neat, and I wanted to show you guys tonight. It probably doesn't have any bearing on anything, but I do have in my possession. So, the family, Stinson family, has been there for a very long time, and we hope to continue that tradition on down the road. We've been there, Stinson's been there 66 years. Okay? Thank you for letting me come back and show you this, because I was pretty excited. I wanted to show everybody. And if you want to look at it later and you promise not to tear it up, I'll let you see it. I'll let you touch it.
Don't worry, you should put on white gloves, like you're an archive.
Yeah, like an archive. I'm not from Sotheby's or anything, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank everybody for being here, and those watching at home, and including the standing room only here tonight. I can't remember the last time we had a full, full, full room like this. So, I want to welcome everybody, and I appreciate you sharing your comments tonight on that. But unless there's anybody else wishing to address council on an agenda item, I'm going to move us on from citizens' concerns. Seeing none, we're going to move to council member reports, and we'll start with Council Member Benage.
I have no reports today, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith?
I also have no report.
Mr. Elsaf?
I do have just a brief report. I would like to just let everybody know that I did attend the Chisholm Creek Utility Authority Committee meeting that was on May 24th. And there was a few items I just wanted to just mention that we talked about. So, for those that don't know, the Chisholm Creek Utility Authority, they're the quasi-private, quasi-governmental utility that is in charge of our water supply and our sewer. And at the last meeting, we had an independent audit of our financial statement, or our financial status, and things are humming along there, I guess I could say. There is no significant problems or anything. I think we've got a good manager there, and I think we're in good hands for the foreseeable future there. There's people that don't get a lot of recognition, but they do a lot of hard work on our behalf to make sure that when we flush our toilets and turn on our sinks, that we got water when we need it. So, you can have confidence that there's people in place making those things work for us. So, I'm definitely appreciative of the work that goes on there. We looked at our 2019 preliminary budget. Again, there's nothing that really stood out, other than there's just good planning for the financial well-being of the Utility Authority for the near-term future. And there was one of our wells, there's a series of wells that we get our water from when we're not buying it from Wichita. There's wells in Bel Air and in Park City, and there's a tributary system that basically funnels those waters into the water treatment plant. So, one of those wells is undergoing a repair. And like I already mentioned, we've got our crews there on top of that, getting that taken care of. So, that's really all I had to report on, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Appreciate your report. I just want to let everybody know, and appreciate that Councilmember Martine sat in for me at the CCA meeting there. I was coming back from the ICSC conference and got here, and they had already started, so I just sat down there and watched them. So, that was nice. And appreciate all the, I think I got more comments from my last mayor's corner by quoting the cheesy 80's song, so just be forewarned. I may just continue that. We'll just do that. But I do want to thank the Planning Commission for everything they've done. I do want to recognize, and see that David Floyd is here, who sits on that committee. And if I'm overlooking any other members, you raise your hand, I see them. But just that, so. Okay. But do want to thank them and all the other members of all of our volunteer committees for that. And I think we had a good time. We opened up the pool. It's been pretty busy from the noise and fun that I can hear when I'm driven by a couple times. But with that, I have no other formal report, so I'm going to move down to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a formal report. I would just add that a protest petition was filed on Aurora Park, meaning that the vote in order to pass now must be a three-fourth majority vote.
Okay. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items. This Saturday is the brush site's open, and it has been getting a lot of use, so I think our citizens appreciate that. One thing that we do have is free mulch available for anybody that's wanting that. You can take your truck out there, or if you have a car or something, we've got bags and shovels. You can just take a bag, put it in your trunk, but it's free for anybody that would like it. And again, that's this Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00 it's open. And then, just a reminder, the end of the month, June 21st through the 23rd is our community-wide garage sales. And so, council waived the permit fees for that, so hopefully, we'll be busy around town, and people can get rid of some of their things that they're wanting to clean out the garage with. So, that's all I had, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. So, with that, I'm going to go ahead and move us into ordinances, resolutions, and final actions. The first item here, Item A, is the ordinance changing zoning on the northwest corner of 37th and Harding. The landowner of Lot 7, Block B of Aurora Park, has requested a zone change from C1 Commercial to R5 Multifamily. The other lots in Aurora Park are zoned R1 Residential. My understanding, the lot owner would like to build duplexes on his property. We did give the proper notification was given to the surrounding landowners. We did hold a public hearing at the May 10th Planning Commission. As has been mentioned previously, tonight, the Planning Commission voted 3 to 3 to not approve the zone change. And as our city attorney just mentioned, the city did receive a protest petition, so would require a three-fourth majority to pass this ordinance. And we do know that Mr. Hoffman is here. If anybody has any questions of that for him, but as I stated earlier, my recommendation to the council is that, is that we don't approve or deny it tonight, that we send it back to the Planning Commission with apologies for probably another long meeting. You know, the last thing I want to do is hold up growth. It's the absolute last thing that any of us want to do. But as I said earlier, this is something I think we want to make sure it's the right thing and the right fit for everyone. We've heard from a lot of citizens tonight, and I appreciate you all politely sharing your comments, concerns, and thoughts. You know, this is a good example of how our system works. You know, we have these volunteer committees, the Planning Commission, and when issues like this come up, and before we take action, we make sure that we can hear from the citizens. And we make sure, it was mentioned that, yeah, they have not had a second meeting to approve the minutes of their last meeting, but we've been able to hear from the Planning Commission, and they've given their recommendation to us. You know, some of you may know my background is in public relations, where our motto is we want to do the greatest amount of good for the greatest amount of people. That's a fancy way of saying compromise. We're talking about three lots right now, three lots that have sat vacant for a long time.
One lot.
Or one lot, I'm sorry. That was going to be, yeah, excuse me. That is currently zoned commercial. We have a private developer who has built in Bel Air, who wants to build again on that lot and is the owner of the lot. We heard from the citizens, some specifics that I heard were concerns over the character of the neighborhood, the lots possibly being too small, and parking. That is why my recommendation, I'm speaking off the cough here, is that we would tonight vote, again, not to approve or deny, but send it back to the Planning Commission so that hopefully, the conversation can take place with Mr. Hoffman, who builds a good home, and with the neighbors, and with the Planning Commission looking at, we heard about the HOA and the covenants and everything. Again, we're talking about something that's zoned commercial right now. So, that's my recommendation, that it would go back to that. Certainly, I would feel a lot more comfortable moving forward with the recommendation if it was not a tie vote. So, we have a Planning Commission who is split on the best avenue to go about this. I've spoken with, again, the suggestion was because of the motion that was made in the Planning Commission, the motion was to deny it, and that's what ended up in a 3-3 tie. Had that motion been to approve it, and it ended in a 3-3 tie, guess what? The recommendation by law then would be for us to approve it tonight. So, that's where we are with this fine, fine, fine line. And I've spoken to two members of the Planning Commission the last couple of days, and there's a, one who voted to approve it and one who voted to deny it. And I got to tell you, they both had some really good ideas, thoughts to back up that. So, that is my recommendation to council tonight. I know, and it's not, not just this, because we have the zoning change, and we also have the setback where, yeah, I think, I don't have it right in front of me, but I know a lot of the homes over there have like 30 feet setbacks, and I think we're talking to, you know, some are, well, some are 40, there are some that are, some that are 30, and some that are 40. So, this is, again, something I'd recommend that it go back to that and with some more specifics. But again, that is my suggestion, and council, I would certainly open it up for any of your thoughts, comments, and certainly a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
A question to the city attorney. Would you be able to comment on how restrictive covenants that may be with that land have an impact or do not have an impact on the zoning in this action specifically?
Not this action specifically. I have not seen those restrictive covenants. Also, if the restrictive covenants have sat idle and not been enforced for a period of time, that could raise issues. If they're applicable to current homes in the area, and this is excluded, that could be an issue. I cannot speak to the restrictive covenants that are here, because I haven't...
Can you hear what she's saying? Is she in the microphone?
We can't hear her back.
I'll just repeat it. I'll turn this way, and I'll repeat what I said. I can't speak to the restrictive covenants in this situation, Councilmember Smith, because I have not seen those restrictive covenants. Sometimes restrictive covenants are an issue when they're not being enforced, and if there's a history of not enforcing those covenants, that could create a problem. If this property is excluded from the HOA because it is a commercial property, that could be a problem. There are lots of things that would have to specifically be reviewed before these restrictive covenants would be applicable. They're not automatically applicable in every case, but I think it may be something to look at.
Yeah, I was mostly just curious if any zoning action that we would take would supersede covenants that already existed. If there are covenants and they do apply, would we, by taking a zoning action, supersede those covenants in any way?
Restrictive covenants apply to residential properties in this case. They would apply to homes. It's unique that you're saying that restrictive covenants apply to a property that's been zoned commercial, because technically, the covenants apply to the homes within the area, the maintenance, et cetera. So, I would be curious to see how the restrictive covenants explicitly say they apply to a commercial property as well. So, if that answers your question, the rezoning may actually bring the property into the covenants and thereby make them apply. It may not. Having not seen them, having not known the specific facts of this situation, I can't comment other than to guess.
Thank you.
The council members?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but is it appropriate for us to ask Mr. Hoffman and the residents here, are they willing to engage in a dialogue, a discussion between the two groups, and see if they can't come up with a win-win proposal for this property?
Yeah, and that's something I think that Mr. Hoffman said he would agree to when we, earlier, when we began the meeting. And before we, after councilmembers have our comments and questions, before we vote, I am going to invite if they would like to have Mr. Hoffman come up and address council. And I'll also, if he's okay with it, because I'm putting him on the spot and I see him, but David Floyd is here with the Planning Commission, since I had my suggestions sent it back, because I want to see if that is something that can happen absolutely, so.
Yeah, well, so, and you're correct. Mr. Hoffman did agree that he would be willing to meet. And I just want to make sure that there are somebody, or maybe a few somebodies, I don't think you would have productivity if you had this large of a group, but a few somebodies from the residences who would be willing to meet with Mr. Hoffman.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Would it also be possible for our city attorney to meet with whoever they meet with?
I'm available.
Sorry, I put you on the spot, but I just think it would be a lot better, maybe you and Mr. Rasher would meet with Mr. Hoffman and... and Mr. Rasher would meet with Mr. Hoffman and somebody appointed from their room.
And again, we've not had a formal motion on this, so before we maybe get into that, but again, that was my suggestion. Councilmembers, you guys certainly all have yours as well, but my suggestion was to send it back and ask that that discussion take place. And we need to know, and I'm going to speak to everybody here in the room and everybody at home too, not all of you are going to be a hundred percent pleased. We just, we know that we're not going to be able to make everybody one hundred percent happy, but can we get to a much better solution than what we have right now? I'm hearing these thoughts and hearing the willingness from the owner, the land developer. Again, not something that I'm wanting to hold up growth, but I, you know, if we need to delay it a month to see if that can happen, I would hope that that could happen.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for our city attorney. Given that the ordinance before us is a rezoning issue, and as a council, we are going to be acting, if we have a motion to approve or deny, we'll be acting as a quasi-judicial role where we are restricted in the nine golden rules, the nine golden factors for decision-making. Does that still stand if we were to entertain a motion to table it and send it back to the commission? Is that still in place?
In your judicial role, you can send an issue back to be studied further, to present more information to you. When that issue goes back to Planning Commission, it's really Planning Commission's responsibility to then prepare a meeting, do some research, execute that however they see appropriate to get you back that information, so then you can act in your judicial role, considering the nine golden factors that you mentioned in that way. So sending this back to Planning Commission to study the issue further doesn't take away from your judicial role, it just, it's just like a judge saying, go back and give me more case law, give me more information on this. So that's what council would be doing if they were to send it back to Planning Commission. It'd be, in all the information that's come in, it would be best not to specifically direct Planning Commission to have this meeting specifically. The instruction is for Planning Commission to bring back information on other options.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One more question for our city attorney. In the initial Planning Commission meeting, I believe their discussion had to be restricted to a zoning classification change from C1 to R5 as it was petitioned. If we were to table this and send it back to the Planning Commission, would they have other alternatives at their disposal to consider other alternative zoning reclassifications, or would it still be restricted to the C1 to R5?
And that's a really fair question, because what's before council right now is the request to, from the petitioner, to rezone this from C1 to R5. That is the narrow, specific question. So to send it back to Planning Commission, Planning Commission would have to still bring back to council information on that specific question. So it would be, but they could recommend that this be something else, so it'd be accept or deny, and in a comma, with the request of the petitioner amended. So in that case, Mr. Hoffman, if he decided to change his petition to something else or amend his petition to R5 and plan to build something different, then Planning Commission could recommend approval, knowing that the specific facts are different, but they're still bound to answer that question. They can't bring back a question saying, you know, answering something different unless the petitioner were to amend his petition or change the facts of what he's actually going to build within the current petition.
Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate the formal process that's required of government, okay? I understand that. But I also recognize that oftentimes that quashes dialogue, and so there's no ability to have a give and take. A person stands up and gives a formal presentation, another person stands up and gives a formal presentation, but there's no dialogue going on there. And so what I really want to encourage, and I've heard from, we've seen Mr. Hoffman say he would be willing to have a meeting, but I really want to encourage that there be a dialogue meeting between the citizens and Mr. Hoffman to see if there's a way that this can be, a compromise can be brought up here. I did not see, and maybe I was too quick to peruse the crowd, but I didn't see anybody say they would be willing to participate in such a meeting with Mr. Hoffman, but I really want to encourage that to happen.
Can we alter?
I think that would be, to be honest, I just think that would be just overwhelming to be able to get through a discussion.
We all have property hours, and we have more property than he has, so it's rather discriminatory.
Okay, I need to move us back in here, since this is not an open hearing, I mean, stick with this, and I apologize to that, but, so to bring us back together here, again, if somebody would like to make a motion, and then certainly with that, again, if you guys follow my suggestion, yeah, I would ask that maybe something specific be set where, yeah, we don't need forty or fifty people to, because we heard a lot of the same things, and that's the good thing tonight, but, you know, the specifics that were brought up, they're on the record, and have that, and who knows, maybe this is the best solution. I just don't know, but I think it's worth it, and I would hope that if we do this, we would ask the Planning Commission to maybe bring, yeah, small, you know, three, four people that could represent and really have that conversation, again, with the landowner, and see what he is, if there's something that could be worked out.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I might recommend, if there's an HOA board, we've done that in the past, had some issues with other subdivisions, and they have an HOA board, that president, vice president, that kind of speaks for the association, I don't know if that's the case or not, but it'd be something to think about.
Let's certainly do that, okay. Any other questions or comments? Now I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm making a motion that we refer this agenda item back to the Planning Commission in the hopes that there can be a dialogue and a compromise proposal brought together and presented, if that's an appropriate motion.
Are you wanting the petitioner to consider revising his petition?
Based upon the dialogue between him and the petitioner and the citizen.
Adding that, that's specific.
Yeah, okay, yes. That's what I would request, yes, thank you.
Is there a second?
Can we continue our discussion, or do we need to wait till?
If we have a second, we can certainly have more discussion before we call the vote. Am I allowed to second this?
Yes, you are.
Then I'm going to second it. So it has been first and seconded. Before calling for the vote, I will ask council members if they have any questions or comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just one quick comment. Our city attorney had advised us that if we were personally contacted by individuals, that we should disclose that prior to taking any action, and so I was contacted by Bonnie Stinson, Sylvia Forte, Daniel and Juanita Watkins, Michael and Linda LaMasters, and Gary Olson regarding the zoning matter that was before us, and each individual expressed that they were in opposition to that zoning matter.
In the interest of full disclosure, I remember that also, and I forgot, and I neglected to point that out, I was also, I have also been in contact and conversations with several citizens. I had a very short dialogue with Mr. Hoffman himself in previous meetings. I attended both of the Planning Commission meetings that were previously held on this issue.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I was contacted by the same ones that the other two council members were, and I did attend the first Council, Planning Commission meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I also was contacted by, I believe, all the residents that Councilman Smith listed, and I brought with me a printout of every email that I received, including a printout of my email in reply to those residents. So I wasn't sure what the formal process is here, but I'm going to hand it over to be in the record officially, so, right. So I guess I also just want to state that I really appreciate everybody who came out here to the council meeting tonight. It's really great, it's really great to see such citizen engagement. I did read the History of Bel Air book that we still have for sale at City Hall, and the old Bel Air, as we call it, of which Aurora Park is a part of, is a part of that charming history of Bel Air, and that was the desire for people to live that kind of country living and homes with a nice piece of land, and whenever you drive through Aurora Park, it's really obvious what the character of the neighborhood is like, what the houses look like, the trees are big and tall and strong, and it's definitely old Bel Air, it's definitely that country living, that kind of quiet, quiet, away-from-the-city living that drew many of us here to Bel Air. I am uncomfortable with the fact that we do not have the Planning Commission minutes published from the May tenth meeting. Now, I did attend that Planning Commission meeting, and I know Councilman Benage was there as well, he already mentioned that, but the other council members up here have, were not at that meeting, and although there, I guess that there was some information shared about what went on at that meeting, but not every council member up here has seen the minutes of that meeting, and that was pointed out by one of the residents that spoke, and I think that's important, important piece to this, since there's a lot of interest in this issue in particular. I guess that concludes my comments at the moment. I have a question for the attorney. Given the narrow focus of this ordinance that has been motioned and seconded, is it, so the ordinance is changing the zoning from C1 to R5, is it appropriate to entertain a question about what other options it could be rezoned to, or is that not something that we could discuss?
That's not something you could initiate, but your request or the motion on the table for planning, that's not something that the council could order, but the request that it go back to Planning Commission and the petitioner, who's willing to consider amending his request, could generate that. So you could end up there if the petitioner is willing to amend his request to possibly re-zone to something else, or to build something different within the zone. There are options at the Planning Commission level, but not so much here. Here, the only thing council can do is to approve, deny, or send back to Planning Commission for this study.
Thank you.
I would like to say that if we were going to vote on this tonight to approve or deny, which I know that's not the motion on the table, because I made the motion, so it's not, but I would have to vote to deny this request as it stands right now. So just so that the record is clear, that's where I'm leaning right now, but I really feel that there's, the bigger issue is that there's been very little dialogue between the parties, and that needs to happen, otherwise you're not going to get anybody, there's never been, nobody's going to be happy with the results, and that's not good.
So right now, we do have a, like I said, a first and a second to table it. I have mentioned previously, so I'm going to give them the option to come up, we've heard from citizens, heard from some comments, but I would invite Mr. Hoffman and David Floyd from Planning Commission, if either one of you two wish to come up and speak to council before I call on this vote, I would give you that opportunity at this time. And do want to let everybody know, back here, I did get a message up here from a citizen at home, that Channel Seven was offline, I sent a message to Tristan, and within two seconds, we're back on, so, thank you.
Mayor, Council, David Floyd, 4530, Westlake Court. With respect to the rezoning, because I do have something I'd like to share when it comes time to discuss the setback, but with respect to the rezoning, the decision, well, the notion to send it back to Planning Commission is a wise one. We will continue to exhaust the process and weigh and measure the nine golden factors as we did before, and it's paramount of importance that we keep those nine factors in mind when we make a recommendation to you. I was the person who mentioned tax revenue at the Planning Commission meeting, and I want to go on the record specifying that we are talking about the revenues that are necessary in order for the incorporated city to function and sustain for all of us as Bel Air residents. We are not talking about profit. We are talking about the agreement that private properties have with their government in order to function and function well. And you do have a private property owner that is wishing to make an investment in the city in which he owns the property, much like all of us, like many of us. That being said, these nine golden factors exist for the protection and preservation of current land uses, and everyone here in the room this evening. The character of the neighborhood was obviously something that was on a lot of people's minds, it's on my mind. I don't want you to think that we aren't paying close attention to the aesthetics of the neighborhood. It's very important to understand that there is a, the home across the street from the proposed lot has a Loblawli pine tree in front of the front door and a row of cedar trees that are screening it from Thirty-seventh Street. It's important to understand that at the finalization of the rebuild of Thirty-seventh Street, a $4.8 million investment in Thirty-seventh Street, that swamp white oak and three Chinese pistaches were planted in the right-of-way of the subject property. It is important to pay attention to these details, and so I respect your opinion to send it back to the Planning Commission, Mayor, and am willing to carry on dialogue in the interim with any of you or anyone here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Floyd for those comments. I share in the thought that that's a great suggestion to continue the dialogue here, because I also have several concerns with the proposal as it is listed, the character of the neighborhood being a chief concern. I went over and I drove by the lot and looked at the neighborhood, I've seen it many times, but I did it again, just to make sure I had a really good feel for it, and I'm struggling to see how the current design would really add to the character or complement the current character of the neighborhood. And so I hope that through this continued process, there can be some dialogue and something more favorable can be achieved.
Any other comments? And again, I'll just say, thank you so much, Mr. Floyd, for that, and I'm going to call for the vote here in a second. Again, this, we could find out that this is the best thing for it. I don't want to discount that, but I also don't I don't wanna discount that, but I also don't wanna discount all the thoughts and comments that were made here today, and something is gonna go on this land. We have a private developer who's invested in it, who has built in Bel Air, and I think, I appreciate your willingness to have this conversation, and like Councilmember Benage said, and how City Manager Lasher suggested, you know, possibly maybe the Homewoman Association President, yeah, this does not need to be a big, 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 you know, group with all that, but if we could have, maybe kind of a, you know, talks amongst yourselves type thing, and identify two or three people that could, you know, have it, kinda like we've had tonight, nice conversation, understand, respect the fact that, you know, this is Mr. Hoffman's property, at the same time, I think he respects the fact that this is your neighborhood. So, I think we can come up with something that's gonna benefit the, benefit him and his investment, that's also going to benefit the community. Growth, as I've mentioned before, is not something at all I wanna put brakes on, but if we need to put brakes on for a month, I would rather be a month too late than a month too early in jumping the gun on this one for that. So, we do have a motion, I'm gonna have to remember exactly what it was, it's basically to send it back to the Planning Commission with suggestion that there be a conversation between a select few number of people from Aurora Park and the lot owner, Mr. Hoffman, on a possibly redesign, and with a recommendation, they come back with a recommendation to us again after that meeting. So, it's basically, in a nutshell, the motion. With that, it is a roll call vote. Again, the motion is to send this back to the Planning Commission. At this point, not to approve or deny. Jim Benage?
In favor?
Jeff Halsoff?
Aye.
Jeff Hans is not here. Betty Martine?
Aye.
Justin Smith?
Aye.
I also vote in affirmative. Wish everybody the best of luck, and look forward, I mean, in a month, to seeing what exciting thing, again, whether it is this, or if it's something completely new that goes there. Look forward to that. Then, we're gonna move on to item B, which kinda continues in the same vein here. Item B is a, I always feel weird saying a vacation word, because I love to order vacation, but this is a whole other type of vacation. Again, this property owner of Lot 7 Block B of Aurora Park has also requested that the building setback be vacated from 50 to 25 feet, following all the protocol, proper notification was given to the landowners. We did have the public hearing at the May 10th Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission voted to not approve that request. It's my understanding that not all the lots in Aurora Park are in compliance with the 50-foot setback, and again, spoke earlier, a member of the Planning Commission, and learned that, yeah, 25 may be a little too short, but maybe, you know, 30, 40 might be a better number for that. I do not wanna put words in their mouth, but again, let me find it where I'm here. The Planning Commission did vote to not approve this, so, yeah, my opinion would be to send this item back as well, to determine that right setback number for Aurora Park that could be fairly, fairly applied to this lot. Let's see if there are thoughts, comments from council on that.
Mr. Mayor? I think Mr. Floyd had indicated that he had comments to share with us on this. Can we invite him to the voting?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor Council, for the record. David Floyd, 4530 Westlake Court. Just wanna bring light something that's in our zoning code, Section 6.07D, what's called setback averaging. It's been somewhat implied this evening, and in my review, it seemed to be that there are, in fact, some homes that are encroaching into the setback as it exists, the 50-foot setback on the west side of Harding. That is just in my opinion, I can't say that for certain, and from a review of an unofficial, a map that is not an official survey of the land, but rather just a resource made available to the general public. If that is accurate, it's not a big deal, you know, this thing, these types of things happen, and it can be managed, so much so that there is a provision for it in your zoning code, says if existing front setbacks have developed lots within the same block and same residential zoning district, and fronting on the same side of the street are less than the required front setback of the underlying residential zoning district, applicants should be allowed to use the average front setback in the block. In such cases, the average front setback shall mean front setback of all lots on the same side of the street within the same block as the subject property. So, I think that's something that needs to be studied. If, in fact, there are homes on the same block, on the same side of the street, encroaching into the 50-foot setback, certainly need to entertain the setback average. It sounds like we have a framework for deciding what the setback of the subject property is, and we just need to do the math. I'll stand for questions.
Councilmember, have a question?
I appreciate that information. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Item B, if there's any comments or questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor? I move that we send this item, or turn this item back to the Planning Commission for further study, to determine a more appropriate setback.
Second.
First and second, any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. I propose. Move on to item C, which is a conditional use permit. It's for the property at 4437 North Rushwood Court. They are requesting a conditional use report, uh, use permit, beg your pardon. This will be for a home-based consulting business. Do you wanna point out that no clients visit the home in the business, would not change the character at all of the neighborhood or their home? And do you wanna make full disclosure here, that our owners are, the owner of this property is our very own Councilmember Jim Benage, so I would imagine he could answer any questions anybody has on that.
Be happy to. Do you, I need to approach the podium.
I think we're okay here.
He needs to go to the podium.
He's okay.
She said he did.
Oh, wait, does she? I need to have to say Betty was right.
Well, you weren't looking at the attorney, I was.
I can talk from here, just evolve from there. Maybe even better, I don't know.
All right, so again, anybody have any questions for property owner, Mr. Benage, 4437 North Rushwood Court?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd just like for you to state what type of, whatever you do.
Consulting, okay.
Consulting.
So, I do business process consulting and business process auditing. So, if you've heard of ISO 9000 companies, companies certified ISO 9000, I'm the guy who comes in and audits them to see if they're compliant, okay? The same with aerospace, AS 9100 compliant companies, I'm the guy who comes in and audits them to see if they're compliant. I'm not the only guy, there's lots of us around, but I'm one of many.
Well, I didn't say in your application, and I just didn't want the public to say, "Well, he's opening up a gambling casino."
No, I'm not doing that. So, I would like to make a small statement here, is that my business is zero impact to the neighborhood. I have no clients, I've never had a client come to my residence, probably never will, and I do apologize for not being in compliance with this, I really just failed to look into this previously, and, but I understand that one time, this was not a requirement that this, have this business license permit, that that was changed in 2016, but I don't know if that's accurate, I don't know when it was changed, but maybe I don't have good information on that. But, anyway, I will obviously abstain from voting on this, but I do request the Planning Commission and staff to give consideration as to how we not put this burden on zero impact businesses. Just so you know, this application cost me out of pocket, and this is not a complaint, it's just a statement of fact, $675.
Phew.
Okay, for this application. Now, that's because I have 30 residences within 200 feet of my property, okay? So, 'cause I live at the end of the Cozak, it covers lots of places, okay? So, but that's a significant impact for many businesses, and probably not very sustainable for some folks. It's okay, I'm cool with it, but I hate to see us continue that process with our community, okay? Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor? I move to approve an ordinance approving a conditional use on certain properties zoned R4, located within the corporate city limits of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, any other comments or questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have a comment. Yeah, when I saw this come through before us and all the paperwork, and I was surprised, I thought, this is, this seems like a really complicated administrative set of hoops to jump through for something as simple as having a business out of the home that really has no impact on the community whatsoever. I saw the list of all the neighbors that were notified, and it's like a full-page listing of addresses, and I didn't, I wasn't aware of what the total cost was, but that is, I don't know, it seems like unnecessarily complicated and expensive, and if we're gonna be the city of the future, we need to be a city that promotes private business and enterprises, such as Mr. Benage's, and I don't say that just because he's a councilman sitting here, this is the first, yeah, I don't know, it's, it just struck me as, I don't know, I don't know. Maybe we need to re-look at this, I, you mentioned about maybe possibly relooking at the process here, so.
Yeah, not for my benefit, for the benefit of the city.
Sure, for the city, and I think for the residents, for all residents, anyone that wants to engage in any sort of, I guess, consulting business or whatever, where they're coming out of their home, I mean, presumably, you're doing stuff like working on the computer at your house, right?
Right.
Something you're gonna do anyway.
Computer, bookkeeping, that kind of stuff, yeah.
It just, yeah.
I was gonna say, I sort of think this is something maybe we could put on for July workshop.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Actually, you know, we had an item like this come before us earlier this year, and the following workshop, I believe it was in the February or March workshop, we discussed this quite at length, and I, if I recall, the conclusion that we came to at that meeting was that in order to further review this process or change this process, it wasn't really something that we, the council, could take action on. The only action that we could take would be to refer that to the Planning Commission and ask them to study this process. At that time, I think we were considering doing an informal action to the Planning Commission, but I think it might be appropriate, even as early as our next council meeting, to make a formal action requesting the Planning Commission to study how we can improve this process, and potentially provide exemptions for certain businesses or operations that meet zero impact criteria like this, because as I brought up after the earlier action this year, I think this process is very burdensome on the citizens of Bel Air. I think most people probably don't know about it, and certainly don't follow this process, and I don't think it's a good one, and we need to fix it, so.
Mr. Mayor?
To kinda pick up on where you two left off, he mentioned $675. Well, that depends on how many people that lived around him, like he stated.
Right.
Plus, you have to pay staff for the bookwork and all of the notices and all that stuff that goes out. I think the initial fee for this type of deal, business license, is only $200.
It's $175.
$175.
That's the fee to the city.
So, I really don't feel that that's all that bad, because if you let this go, I feel like you're gonna have a lot of businesses in Bel Air that you don't know what's going on. That's not just because of me, but a lot of people are gonna be calling up the staff and saying, "Well, I think there's something going on next door, there's a lot of cars coming in and going." And it does bring revenue into the city, it was just unfortunate that Mr. Benage has all those people that live around him. And then, of course, all that mailing, I think, what is it, $6 and something, a registered letter that has to go out to all those people, and they've got to sign for them. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, the bulk of the cost is the $500 that had to go to a title company to do the research.
Right.
And what I think I'm hearing from other council members up here is, we don't necessarily do away with this, we see if we can't make this a whole heck of a lot simpler and a lot more economical.
Yeah, I guess the issue is the zero impact to the community-type business, where it's not having customers coming to the house, that sort of thing. Yeah, we did discuss that at the workshop.
I think it was February or March workshop.
Right. I forgot about that. So, yeah, if we could look at putting that on our...
Right now, we do have a first and a second. On item C, it does have a roll call vote. Jim Benage is going to abstain.
Yes, abstain.
Jeff Halsoff?
Aye, approve.
Jeff Hans is not here. Betty Martine?
Aye.
Justin Smith?
Aye.
I'll go ahead and vote, too. Motion passed, okay.
Thank you.
Item D, consideration of selecting a contractor, talking water main here. City has an old water main that runs along 45th from CCU A to Bel Air. Right now, we're starting rebuilding the intersection of 45th and Hillside, and requiring the city to move that line at our expense, surprise, surprise. City engineer is here, answering any questions we have, but she has determined that the main no longer is, no longer needs, is needed, and is recommending that the city cap the line and install a blow-off hydrant. I don't even know what a blow-off hydrant is, but I'm gonna take your word for it, and like I said, and is here, had to answer any questions, but basically, we're faced with an expense to move the line, because the state is rebuilding a intersection, our city engineer says, you know what, we don't have to move it, we can just cap it. I guess, is that kinda like when I capped the Springfield line in my backyard, which I did when I put in what I referred to as Elizabeth Land in my backyard, so, figure that out, but, so, all right. Well, that's good news, then, that we can avoid that expense of moving and bringing in a new line, I guess, if that's...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to accept the quote from doing construction at a total cost of $12,875 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments on this?
I would, I would appreciate, Mr. Lasher, if you could elaborate as to why the city is bearing this cost when it's due to a issue with reconstruction of an intersection in Wichita.
Sure. And actually, it will be coming up when we start widening wood lawn. So, the two types of utilities that utilize our right-of-ways, Bel Air right-of-ways, are public and private. So, the private ones would be Westar, Kansas Gas, Cox Cable, those type, and the city has franchise agreements with those, and you have not seen those recently, because they usually run 10 or 20 years. And as part of that, then we get, the city gets a fee every month for them utilizing our utilities. The other piece of it is, then, public utilities. So, for example, we do have some Wichita lines in our right-of-ways, we've got some lines in county, in this situation where it's actually in the city of Wichita, and typically, what we do in those situations is it's just a simple agreement, we don't pay or they don't pay us franchise fees. It's just kind of a mutual agreement between the two, that if anything has to be moved, they will move it. And so, this was put in years and years ago, so I assume it was probably done when the county had it, and then the city annexed the right-of-way in the streets and stuff, so it became their right-of-way, and so that's why we have to pay to move it, or cap it, or do something like that. Same thing will happen when we get to wood lawn expansion, then in those situations, we'll go to Westar and tell them that they have to pay to move their line. So, that's kind of how that works out, that we, in this situation, we're paying, but a lot of times, when we're doing right-of-way work, someone that's utilizing our right-of-way has to pay. has to pay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You have a first and second to use Drilling Construction to do this? Any other questions or comments? I want to thank our city engineer for sitting through all this and being here just in case it were. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item E is consideration of appointing a review committee for the Planning Walkable Places Grant. This is a grant that we do from WAMPO. And what it is, is, Bel Air, we receive an 80% grant from WAMPO to create a bicycle and pedestrian master plan. KDOT and WAMPO are working on the RFP process, but they require that we have a committee to assist in choosing the consulting firm that will create the plan. And Anne Stevens, I believe, should be one as our WAMPO representative. And I would also suggest that Tristan Terahue, who has been working with Anne internally on a master plan, and the city manager, would also be another recommendation to sit on this committee. Do you want to see if there's a councilmember who would like to sit on the committee as well? If I can entertain a motion for this committee. And do we have to have five on that, or?
No, a minimum of three.
Minimum of three, so if we do, you, Anne, and Tristan, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What are the obligations of being a part of this committee? What are the timings at which the committee would meet?
So, we'd probably meet probably two to three times. First would be to review all the proposals or qualifications from the engineering companies. Then we would meet at some time, probably during the day, it could be very flexible, to talk about who maybe our top three choices would be. And then, at that point, we would have another meeting and interview those, or those qualified engineering firms. And then, it would then be a recommendation to, back to the council or KDOT?
It would go to the council for approval and then to WAMPO.
To KDOT.
And KDOT in the city of Wichita, Wichita is acting as the funding agent for this process. And it is, we need a minimum of three. Tricia Thomas from WAMPO is one of the required three members of the committee.
So, is this, is this to come up with a design, or what are we, what are we gonna accomplish with this?
This phase is selecting the consultant that will then work with the city to hold public meetings and things like that, to actually design the plan. So, all this process is doing is selecting a consultant.
And then, what's done with that plan, once this is developed?
Then it's for the city to utilize so that we can go after grants and then, when we're doing projects like Woodlawn, to know that we would have a bike plan that eventually will meet, match up with Wichita's bike plans. We've already got 37th Street now and it just gives us a plan of when we're developing infrastructure, of where we would want to add those. And like I said, the key is, for most grants, you have to have a plan that just prove to them that you're moving towards something bigger. And so, that's the real benefit of this.
Thank you.
But ultimately, it'll come back before council, before we would enter into that agreement anyway, and so we'll have a chance as council to review that agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have an idea of what cost is gonna be on this? Obviously, we're looking at 20% of whatever the total is, but I haven't seen anything that shows any sort of estimate on that. Do we have anything?
Yes.
This project was awarded to us in 2017. The previous council accepted the award of the project. The whole, the total sum of the project is $36,000. The city's share is 20% of that plus 1.5% for an administrative fee for WAMPO. That fee has already been paid to WAMPO for this project, so at this point, we're not out, we've already paid for it. The total that has been paid was, it was $7,200 for our 20% of the project plus $437 for an administration, administrative fee. That was, I believe, was approved by the previous council.
Okay.
And has already been paid and received. So, this motion tonight is for the selection of a committee to review the proposals that we get in, similar to on Woodlawn. However, with this project, the 20% fee has already been paid. It's a go, it's just who's going to be selected to help us perform the work of finalizing our plan.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The one input I'd like to make on this, and I'm not so much wanting to be on this committee, I think you have a good selection of folks that are very qualified to do this, but I really don't like these bike paths in the street. And I've talked with businesses and they hate them because they cause them all kinds of havoc with traffic patterns and people trying to get into their businesses and get out of their businesses and bicycles being in the way. I really encourage that, look at those 10-foot sidewalks if you can. Anyway, just to go back there, okay?
And ultimately, this process will be very similar to the Park Master Plan in that the consultant that's chosen, the council will select, will then start holding public hearings and stuff so that citizens can come in and say, "Oh, I love, love the bike paths in the streets," or "I hate them in the streets," or whatever. And then, they'll kind of put the plan together and then present it to the Planning Commission for their input and then council for your input. And then, eventually, the council will have a final adoption of the plan itself. So, there's gonna be a lot of opportunity for that for citizens because that's the goal, is to have the citizens have the input.
Come on, that's great.
And there'll be several of those.
Good.
Councilman Benage, do you have any interest in being on that?
I think I would like to pass on that because I'm already involved in a couple of other things and we're working on another one that we'll see if that comes to fruition, so. Okay. But thank you.
Want to entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to appoint Anne Stevens, Tristan Terahue, and Ty Lasher to the Planning and Walkable Places Committee.
Second.
First and second, any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same side. All right, final item that came before council tonight is a KDOT agreement for the Woodlawn expansion, which we kind of heard referenced there a little bit. A lot of people know, the city received a grant to expand Woodlawn from 37th Street to 45th Street. The grant covers 80% of the cost with the city picking up the remaining 20%. Construction is scheduled to begin in about a year and a half in 2020 with design working taking place over the next year here, the next several months here. To move forward, an agreement is required with KDOT to begin the process for this project. Anne Stevens is still here to discuss the project and answer any questions. Do you want to point out that our city attorney has reviewed the agreement and can also answer any questions we have on that? If I remember correctly, we sent out six, we received six back, is that?
We sent out seven and received seven back.
Oh, seven, beg your pardon. So, anybody has any questions on that? But we do need to, the actual need to take tonight is basically to approve the agreement with KDOT, right? Not necessarily pick the, because we are committing everything, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The one question that I have is, in the definition section of the contract, we're defining what the project scope is and it specifically defines the project's scope as reconstructing the existing two-lane section to a three-lane section with a curb and gutter on Woodlawn Street from 37th Street to 45th Street, including reconstruction and signaling of the intersection of Woodlawn Street and 45th Street and constructing a 10-foot multi-use path to connect a path proposed for 37th Street from Oliver Avenue to Woodlawn Street. The question that I have is, we have previously talked about doing a study prior to the beginning of this project to determine what the most effective street size is, whether it's two-lane, three-lane, 10-lane, based on the traffic pattern. They have a discussion based on what we can afford there to decide what's appropriate to move forward with. By entering into this agreement now, do we limit our ability to deviate from the project as listed here?
In my discussions with KDOT, we have the ability to amend the agreement after the study, depending on what road section the council decides to pursue. So, yes, entering into this agreement now with a three-lane, that is the scope that was put forward when the project was initially put into the transportation improvement plan with WAMPO, but there is an opportunity to revise the scope based on the study if the traffic warrants conclude that a different section would be better served for the area.
And I read through the agreement, but there's quite a bit of legal ease there and so I guess I would just ask a question of the city attorney. Do you feel comfortable that there's sufficient language in the current agreement that allows us to revise the agreement based on the results of that study?
Yes.
Okay.
And along those lines, we could also revise the dollars, the dollar share because it's pretty specific right now that there's gonna be $4,219,920 from, between federal and the state for this project and the rest of it is on the city of Bel Air.
That is correct. The dollar amount that is listed in the project is all that has been approved at this time
Right.
by both the state and KDOT. There is an opportunity to go back before WAMPO to ask for additional funding, whether, I'm not sure the chances on that, but there is an opportunity.
Right.
That is something that would need to, we would need assistance from a consultant with moving forward.
Correct.
There is an opportunity, but the money that is there is all that has been appropriated for this project at this time.
Okay. And I appreciate you giving us that information because I do know that WAMPO does consider revisions to these projects and somewhat, I don't know how routine, but it seems like it happens enough, so. But, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Sorry. Mr. Mayor, if I can just add the clarification because of your question, that the two are separate, so we could revise the scope of the project and not assume that additional funding would be granted, or we could do both together, just, or the two can have each.
We have both flexibility, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Great, thank you. So, when I ran the quick numbers on this, I know these are just estimates, but right now, this looks like the city would be paying 41% of the project cost and the, between the federal and the state government, they'd be paying 59% because they're only paying 20%, or they're only paying 80% of the actual construction costs. All the engineering work, all the other work, we, the city pays those costs.
That is correct. They pay for 80% of the construction costs and 80% of the construction observation costs, but they do not pay for any initial design work, they will not pay for the study, and they will not pay for any right-ofway acquisition or utility relocation.
Mr. Mayor, I did have a question, so, I read through this agreement and one sticking point that I wanted to point out, and it somewhat bounces off what Councilman Benage mentioned earlier about sidewalks. In Article III, Section 9, Section 9 of Article III is dealing with the right-ofway. There are a number of bullet points on there and I am looking at D and E, Delta and Echo, Article III, Section 9, D and E. D reads, "Non-highway use of right-ofway. Except as otherwise provided, all right-ofway provided for the project shall be used solely for the public street purposes. If federal funds are used in the acquisition of right-ofway, any disposal or change in the use of right-ofway or in access after construction of the project will require prior written approval by the secretary." And immediately following that is Section E, it reads, "Trails and sidewalks on KDOT right-ofway intentionally deleted." So, my question is, where does that put our 10-foot sidewalk? Is that considered part of the right-ofway? As I read through those words, it seems like there's a question there of, is the sidewalk considered within the right-ofway or outside of the right-ofway? And how does that get divided up as we move forward?
The sidewalk is within the right-ofway, however, it is city-owned right-ofway, it is not KDOT right-ofway. That's why it was intentionally deleted because it's not KDOT right-ofway. KDOT right-ofway would be K254, K96, something that is particularly owned by the state.
So, this agreement would not have bearing, if we make amendments to what that, or I guess changes to what the sidewalk might look like, like dimensions or whatever, as long as it's on our city right-ofway, we can?
Correct.
This agreement isn't addressing that?
Correct.
Okay.
And regarding your previous question on the non-highway use of right-ofway, there's, throughout particularly the 37th Street project, in reference, since everybody's familiar with that, if there was private property located within that right-ofway, with the exception of mailboxes, that private property needed to be removed. On Woodlawn, I know of one location where there is a property owner's fence that is located on city right-ofway that will need to be removed at the property owner's expense. There is a jog in the right-ofway, I'm not sure the exact dimensions, but let's say from 30 feet to 50 feet, the rest of the neighbors are at 30 feet and this property is at 50 feet. Example only. That property owner needs to move their fence back to that 50-foot line because that is the right-ofway on that piece of property. Those are, that is what this paragraph D is referring to. Utilities are acceptable for use in the right-ofway, they are already existing. KDOT understands that some utilities need to be relocated and that is acceptable according to this agreement.
Do you have any other questions? Item F here, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the agreement with KDOT for Woodlawn Avenue extension and authorize the mayor to sign.
A second?
First and second, are there any other questions or comments? Call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion of future issues, we did see the request, we do not have a June workshop, unless anything is absolutely pressing that you think we need to have.
Mr. Mayor, I think the only thing pressing on my mind is just to make sure that we can take action at our next council meeting on the item we spent quite a bit of time discussing regarding referring an item to the Planning Commission for study on our special use ordinances.
Is that something we can do in two weeks?
It would need to be moved to the July meeting because Planning Commission, unless you want Planning Commission to have a special meeting, their next regular meeting would be at their June 12th meeting.
14.
Which, or 14.
14.
Which would actually, actually make it possible for them to return a recommendation without minutes. So, it's possible.
Okay.
So, is that...
Yeah, and my thought there was, since, you know, we've discussed this at length in a workshop already and we're not actually taking an action other than asking for a study of the Planning Commission, I just want to make sure we don't forget about this again and continue to put this enhanced burden on citizens in our community.
So, is everybody comfortable voting with not, without having? You mentioned that the Planning Commission minutes wouldn't necessarily be a part of that.
Right, because it'll take a month after that meeting for them to...
They have to approve their meetings.
So...
And I, just to clarify, I was simply referring to the action that asked them to look at the item, not that we would be taking any follow-up action on that immediately.
Okay.
Just to clarify, I'm, yes, I'm only asking that we take an action to ask them to look at this.
At their...
At their, at their next available meeting, at our next meeting.
But if we don't know what they're doing, how are we gonna take action?
Well, they will then...
They're gonna let us know.
So, your request is to, we request the Planning Commission to review this issue.
That's right.
Yeah, just to make sure that we do that. So, with that, I would ask that our city manager maybe talk with the chairperson... talk with the chairperson of the Planning Commission and.
Yeah.
Make sure that that meaning that, that two or three representatives from Aurora Park along with Mr. Hoffener are invited to the next meeting for.
Oh, different subject.
I'm confused now.
Me too.
I think that's a different subject.
Yeah, let me, let me clarify again.
Okay.
So, my request is that our, at our next city council meeting, we have an item on our agenda that requests that our Planning Commission review our policy and ordinances on special use ordinances and permits and propose recommendations that would eliminate burdens on our, on our citizens for home-based businesses and other uses that would clearly not have any impact to their neighbors and community.
Okay, sorry, I was thinking about Planning Commission, we've had so much conversation on Planning Commission tonight. Been a long day, but with that, let me just ask, we've given you a pretty big agenda for our next meeting, is that something?
I can't speak for the Planning Commission, but I can, uh, personally commit putting some time and energy towards reviewing special use permits.
That's all I need to hear. So, we'll do that, so, okay. So, look forward to that.
Is it gonna come back to us in July?
No. Right?
Yes, I, I don't believe we would be specifying the time period in which they would have to review it.
He's just asking, since we had that conversation, the discussion, that we make sure that it's on the Planning Commission's radar to be discussed. And it's all those conveniences.
Yes, and that there's a formal motion on the next.
Right.
agenda to refer to Planning Commission, so it's documented.
Yep. Nothing's gonna change immediately, but.
Yes.
It's happening, it's working, it's.
We're making progress and not forgetting about this.
There you go. Anything else to bring up? I have no need for an executive session. Is anybody else? If you have not, at 8:52, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Motion, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.